Seeing as it is 7:00 PM, I will call the November 2nd Study Session of the Board of Education to order if we could start with. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vargas-Crummonde is going to read the landing document for us.
The Westerland Oakway Central School District acknowledges the indigenous people of this region and that this school district building sits on the homelands of the Anindwaga Seneca of the Huzanasani Confederacy. It is on these lands that we teach, learn, and live.
Thank you very much. As I work off my piece of paper, as like you're still updating here, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Dr. Johnson, are there any changes to the agenda?
We do not have any changes tonight.
Excellent. May I have a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Connor, seconded by Ms. Born of All. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all is in favor. That is 5-0. Ms. Lustig, Mr. Bay is hopefully joining us later. He had a work commitment this evening. Next on the agenda is public comments. We do not have anyone signed in for public comments, but we do welcome the public at all of our meetings, and all of our meetings generally contain public comment time. Next on the agenda is review of the minutes. This is a first read of our October 19th, 2023 minutes. So there's no action on that tonight, and we anticipate approval at our November 16th meeting. If there are any questions or comments on the minutes, please reach out to Ms. Lustig. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
All right, thank you, my friend. Well, I'd like to start out tonight and start with our customary question for the year, where we're a question we're using to ground ourselves and just report back to the board on how are all the children? So here are some pictures from across the district of a few of the things that have been happening. Of course, we had our annual Halloween parade, so I just want to say thank you to our staff and to our families. Those are really a big deal for us, as all of you know, right from the costumes that the kids bring in. But as you can see from the picture at the top there, every elementary school had a theme, which was pretty cool, and most of the upper grade schools as well. So the staff, I think, have just as much fun as the students. I also want to give a shout out to our Rockaway Police Department and our district security, because they play a major role as we do the community parades around, you know, the different neighborhoods. So just a really fantastic tradition here in Rockaway. In the lower left-hand corner, that's Courtney Cox. She's one of our art teachers, primarily at Dake, but she works a little bit across the district too at times, and she celebrated Bob Ross's birthday. So that's pretty cool. And there are some other pictures that were on social media, where her art club at Dake actually decorated the lockers as well. So they all dressed up in theme, but they had some just motivational quotes from Bob Ross that they shared. And I think what that reflects is just a sense of community, right, and a sense of ownership and the pride that the students take in their buildings, and that's really what we're striving for, you know, the high school seniors. So here's four seniors that actually went to Rogers in that picture, and they came back and they were able to just kind of reflect back on their days at Rogers, share some motivational words, inspirational words with the students there. It's just a really great connection. They had some different games and things, again, focused on building community within the building, and teachers were involved. I think they mummified some teachers as well, which was, so the students having a really good time with that. So kudos to them. And then in the upper left there, you can see our sophomore, Brenna Scott. She earned, she actually won the Section 5 Class B diving championship recently. So that was a pretty big deal as well. So congratulations to Brenna and her entire family and team. I know there's a lot that goes into that, and our swim team is actually, I think, competing tonight. It was either tonight or last night, but I don't remember which. So some updates from around the district, just a couple of things to make note of. So thanks to the Board of Education, last year you had an experience. You got to visit, maybe it was a presentation at East Sports from East Rockaway. So Mrs. Miga organized a visit out there to see the club in operation. So she visited with Jim Zadzek, who's our instructional technology, TOSA, and also a teacher in the district. And they visited first. I came in a little late and got a separate tour. But we got to see their students in action, talk about the, you know, the technology, the equipment, the software, learned a lot about the different levels of gaming. They gave us some advice around, you know, do you go with PCs or the modules, what do they call it, Chrisy? Consoles, consoles. You can tell I'm a big gamer, as far as the Nintendo Switch. That's where we're at right now, my house. But yeah, got a feel for the cost, how they kind of balance the space with some of their instructional programming and maximize some of the hardware there, leverage that for some other programs, and then how they compete. So, you know, they did a student survey right out of the gate. They had a really great response rate when they were looking to initiate this. And they talked about, you know, students that had responded to the survey were students that weren't typically associated with any other clubs or sports. So really kind of a nice niche, but they found that now it's a real blend of students. So pretty cool to watch, and we're going to be doing some investigating around the pricing and see different things. And of course, we have the money set aside in this year's budget, so. Got a chance to spend the last hour with our district policy committee. Thanks to Michelle Kramer for organizing and leading that this year. Again, this is attached to the Board of Education's personal goal that we extended from last year around looking at the policy manual from a DEI lens. So we knocked out probably a half, at least, of the Section 1000. So just want to report back that that's going very smoothly, and thanks to Rosa and Vicki for being part of that. Yesterday, as a leadership team, we had our second session with the University of Rochester War School, and we've been doing some work this year around the frames of leadership. Yesterday, we focused on communication, had some great discussions around that, and then dove into some, just some tabletop scenarios, one of the frames of leadership and applying that in different settings. So really great conversation. Then last, just want to report back on some different ways that we're seeking to engage the school and community. So today kicked off first round of coffee with the superintendents. So that was something that we started last year, that we do one on the north end, one on the south end, and one in the middle on the main campus. It's just really an open invitation for staff to come and connect, have conversations around ideas, ask questions, or just really make a connection. So appreciate the people that participated in that this morning. And then we have another one coming up. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but we'll make some announcements. We also have a student summit. I believe it's Tuesday next week. We're doing it at the main campus, and that's open for the students, 7 through 12. And that's just really a way, we're kind of bringing back what used to be, it was the superintendent's advisory council when I first started, and then through COVID, it kind of took a hit. Last year, I went on a road show and visited a bunch of clubs and activities around the district, which was really beneficial for me to make those connections and have conversations with those clubs and advisors to understand the work and just really, again, answer questions and make connections. So this year, a little different, still going to do some of that, but this is an open invitation for students, and we're going to have kind of a community building forum where, you know, it'll be open for discussion, but then if they have specific items that they want to bring to the table. So that would be a great way to make those connections and stand for them. Then on the seventh, we had our first of three community connections for this year. It's a little bit of a banquet of different themes. We're doing one just around the latest trends and that parents should be aware of with drugs and vaping. We're doing some, if you have some questions around safety and security and some of the things we've been doing around arrival dismissal, building the neighborhood. We're going to talk around the cell phones and some of the policies that we really reinforced. I wouldn't say that we created these this year. They were there. We just kind of revised those and created a more focused approach to some of those. And then there's a couple of other themes on there. So encourage folks to come out. That will be via Zoom, and we'll have more information, continue to market that through social media. So with that, have to answer any questions if there's anything else that you were wondering about from across the district. That's my report.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Dr. Johnson?
I like that you're bringing back the student summit.
All right, next item on the agenda is Report of Leadership Staff Business. Dr. Johnson? Yes, James, anything to report on that?
Just real quick, I just want to make sure people were aware that this week we had two reviewers from the New York State Education Stabilization Fund Monitoring Team. What this is a group that's going around the state, and it's a requirement New York State has to go with receipt of all the federal monies. So it's not an audit. We always think when people come into our office, it's an audit. They correct me right about that. It's not an audit. It really is what is, is technical assistance. So they come in, and we're Group D, so they go around the state. They started back with Group A in January, Group D, now they're in, obviously, in the fall. This will continue throughout the state. And they kind of look at our documents that we have in place, give us some feedback in terms of tidying them up, answering any questions we have. Really, the whole point of it is if in the future there is an audit, it'll help districts be more prepared for that. So we upload all the documents to them. They give us some feedback on them. And then if there is an audit in the future, the documents are already there. So they're in what's called the portal, business portal. So actually, it was very helpful and informative, and I appreciate Ms. Miga, Ms. Santora, and a lot of people in the business office for all the work and preparation for that. But it was very powerful. It was a worthwhile day with them. Glad to answer your questions.
Any questions for Ms. Brennan? Was it alphabetical? Is that how we ended up in Group D?
It was really nice in the fact that we got to pick when we wanted to do it. We could, we could, based trying to, again, it's supposed to be like, again, technical support. So they kind of asked us just to, you know, look at the ebb and flow of your calendars and prioritize some different periods of time, or it might be a good opportunity for you to sit down and be able to pull all these, because it does take a lot of time to get all the documents together and make any revisions or further updates. And so I do appreciate that they gave us a lot of flexibility around that.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else for Ms. Brennan before we move on? All right, next is Report of Leadership Staff Instruction. And the first item is 2023-24 Learning Spaces Grants Overview. Dr. Johnson?
So it's my pleasure to turn it over to Ms. Miga, and she's going to give us an update on what's happening with those grants.
So happy to share tonight, just really have a chance to share with you all of the grants that were approved for this school here. And per, when our requesters applied last year, we're kind of open with the fact that it'll be a timeline that's kind of set based on the ordering of the supplies and materials and furniture, and then also when those come in, which could take a little bit of time depending on the which vendor they utilize and some of those pieces. So first, we wanted to just take a look at all of the grants that were awarded. So you can see we have a pretty good, definitely K-12 representation, including some special education classrooms. We have some intervention math labs, general ed classrooms across different content areas. We have science, math, ELA. And in some cases, for example, like Bernadette Dematos, her flexible and successful environment was really focused on actually, even though she was the requister, that was for the entire building of Firewood, where they worked together to identify and select flexible for alternative seating that depending on their, the age of the students that they work with, or their particular needs, they put together an entire request, and so that's actually a building-wide grant. So like I said, a lot of variety. Our teachers did a wonderful job of completing the application and providing really thorough explanations and examples. We were able to provide a model from our first go-around the previous year, so they could utilize that to write their application. And as we look at what's currently completed, so our fourth grade classrooms, both Ms. Leonard's and Mrs. Arcreese's classrooms have gotten in their furniture, both really focused on creating that flexible learning environment, but also looking at different collaboration spaces, which we'll see some examples of a little bit later. First grade flexible seating, so that was across Colebrook, two first grade co-op classrooms. And then I'll also show in a moment the reading intervention space at Dake and how that has been reimagined. And we are currently still working on the other grants that had been put in. So all of these grants have aspects that have already been ordered. So we're either waiting for the order to come in, waiting for just some of the different pieces in that process to be completed. But what we'll usually do, especially if it's like a whole classroom kind of reboot, we'll look to work with the teacher that over a break period of time, you know, we can compensate them to come in and reset their classroom. We've had our partners at Vason actually come in to help some of the teachers set up their rooms when it is like a whole class, classroom reboot. So they will help them to organize and help bring together the inspiration that they, they worked on with our teachers to bring it to life in their classroom. So just again, as an important note, our partners at Vason Studios, they're able to work with most of the requesters as they put in applications. So really to help them to not only identify furniture, but what that might look like in their setting based on the needs that they, that our teachers share with our Vason reps. As we, you know, continue to look forward and continue to support, you know, the reimagination of learning spaces for our staff and teachers, we have a couple of things that, you know, every year you do something, you get a little bit better at it, and you learn a little something to make the process even better. So we are working on revising the application. So when we put out the application next time, we're going to include even more models now that we've had so many great, successful grants written by our teachers, so that those can be easily reproduced, because sometimes they think the hurdle for someone who might not grab onto this initially is like, I just don't know how to start or what that looks like. And so we can use the models that have been done previously. We're also working to include on the, on the application, a list of already approved vendors. So now that we've worked with Vason a little bit more closely and for a few years now, we have a better sense of the vendors that they might utilize that were new to us as a district. And so that also takes a little time, a process to get, you know, a vendor approved and to be able to work with them. So we're really going to adjust the application so that it's even more efficient for both the teachers or staff requesting, but then also our, our support in office to complete the, complete the orders. So we'll have a little bit more streamlined application. We're going to shoot to send out the application a little bit earlier as well, so looking at the end of November, so that teachers have a good chunk of time to write the applications. But obviously, the grants are tied to the fiscal year. But if we have the applications done and reviewed and we, excuse me, are able to make our selections in the spring, then we can start to work on some of the orders, excuse me, even though we wouldn't be able to order, obviously, for next year's grants until July 1. But that would allow us to start the ordering on July 1, where typically we've started in the month of July in the past. So we're hoping to make some of those adjustments moving forward. And of course, we want to share some of the spaces. So on the left, this is the Dake ELA Intervention Room, or Dake ELA Lab. On the left was one of the photos used for the inspiration that Vason had provided. Excuse me. And then on the right, you see the actual space. This is Melissa Palitzverduski's room. You can see some of, you certainly see this flexible seating throughout. You can see some of the desks that have the whiteboard essential material on, on the top. So, and those desks can also be adjusted up and down. So it's kind of hard to tell in this picture, but in the back corner, that desk actually is a little bit taller, so some students might choose to stand. So this is one of the smaller spaces that received that. And then we had some of our fourth grade spaces, and again, this was just some of the inspiration. So what are some of those options as far as flexible seating, and what could that look like? And again, part of their project was talking about collaboration or project-based learning versus maybe individual-based learning. And so then you can see some of the actual spaces at Rogers' fourth grade classroom. So you see students working on the left with just different, different flexible furniture. You can see even the bins where you see the young man sitting down in the gray chair, and then in front of him is kind of like a portable desk, I call him. So you're able to kind of move around the room. Again, some flexible seating in the different beanbag-like chairs. You can see the picture towards the top, some of the different stools that kind of help also with like movement. So the stools actually naturally provides a movement for students who prefer that versus, you know, the typical four-legged chair. That's also a surface that you can write upon. And then last, you see one of our students kind of laying down, engaging in her work, which is, it's storage, but also again, an additional learning space. So just some of the creative ways, and that room really focused on the flexible seating, but also the collaboration spaces for students. And so that is our update. Obviously, more great projects to come, but we're really excited, and they vote for the board's support as that really is taking steam across the district.
Thank you, Ms. Miga. Any questions?
I'll just add that I have a daughter at Prof you in third grade, and her class has the flexible seating. And at first, I was like, gosh, like, I wonder if it's going to cause like chaos with like kids fighting over who's going to sit where. And I have to say, I'm like so impressed with how well they don't do that. And she just loves the flexible seating more than I thought it would even like make an impact. But I even feel that she is much more, she concentrates a little bit more that I think instead of having to feel like she's got to concentrate and sit still and, you know, I don't know, flexibility really does help, so. It's great.
I actually saw one of the Rogers when I did the tour, and I asked the students, you know, how do you like the room? They said the same one, that they feel it helps them concentrate, that if they feel that they're getting distracted in certain situations, they can move to a different spot. And, you know, really was, and the feedback was phenomenal from the kids. How many applications did we get? I'm just curious, like the exposure, or how many people are really looking at it?
Yes, so for this year, because we had increased our amount, actually, those were all of the applications except for one, which was just a little bit more of a major renovation and kind of exceeded the amount that was within the grant. So we were able to accept, those are all the grants that we had come in. We were able to accept all of them. The previous year, we had about the same. I think we had about 12 or 13, but we weren't able to accept all of them just because of the amount at that time. So there's definitely a good buzz, and especially now that we've had even more. And I anticipate once we're able to finish off that other in-progress pieces too, that hopefully that buzz will continue, because you do really see the results through the students. So they're very excited and happy and are really engaged through those earnings spaces.
Is there like some kind of review process, so like just post the work being done? Is there some way of saying it achieved the teacher's vision, or just curious? Like, it may not necessarily point to data or anything like that, but just like a post-renovation fee that?
Yeah, I mean, we do it really informally right now, but that's a great idea for a little bit more formalized. We easily put together even a form, one for our teachers, one for students, just to get some continued feedback.
We talked about that with Jeff DiVeronica a couple of times in the past, because we do something like that with grants. And so we talked about gathering some student feedback towards telling last year that's letting right back up.
It's a great process. It could be like an information exchange topic or something like that. I mean, it's really a great story to tell.
Definitely, and I think that when you have like that strong feedback and those metrics, it even helps with donors wanting to like specifically fund projects like this. So that might be a good, a good way to promote it. That's great.
Great feedback. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for that update, Ms. Miga. Next is Report of Leadership Staff Personnel, and the first item is informational, so I'll turn it over to Duncan.
Thank you so much. I want to turn over to Ms. Kramer. Ms. Kramer?
Thank you. So tonight for a first read of the personnel agenda for approval on November 16th, we have a resignation of a teaching assistant and an elementary teacher. We have change in employment status of a temporary cook manager to cook manager permanent. And appointments and welcome to our newest Western Oakway Eagles of a full-time teaching assistant, a school nurse, a cleaner, and our interim TLC director. Recommendation for permanent civil service appointment, found successful completion of probationary period of a cleaner, and a recommendation for tenure for one of our teaching assistants.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Any questions, comments on that? So we will anticipate voting on that at our November 16th meeting. Next on the agenda is Personnel 2, and this one has a recommended action. Ms. Lustig?
Be resolved that the personnel agenda dated November 2nd, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
May I have a motion? Ms. Born of All, seconded by Ms. Vargas-Crummonde. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so this is for Rogers Middle School Principal. I'm going to turn over to Ms. Kramer, but before I do that, I just want to thank, obviously, Michelle. It was a phenomenal process. I want to thank all the people that were involved in that. That included our staff, our students, and our family members. And I shared it recently in a forum. I got a lot of just really positive feedback from people that were part of the process, and that's been growing over time. I think, again, that's attributed to the work that we're putting in, specifically Michelle. To make that sure that that's inclusive, we're minimizing kind of the bias through that process, but we're also maximizing kind of the canvassing that we're doing as well, the connections that we're making to draw people, and it was a really solid pool of over 20 applicants. And we're extremely pleased at the person that we're identifying. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Kramer to introduce the recommendation.
So our recommendation tonight is for our new Rogers principal. Congratulations to Nick DiMartino. Nick comes to us after being assistant principal at Dake. Prior to that, is a teacher at Hurley Falls Lima Central School District. A lot of the work that Nick has done, his background and experiences in leading those teams, his focus on rigor and social-emotional learning, and that deep understanding of culture, responsibility, and sustained practices made an excellent candidate for your record, for your approval today.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Any questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor. That is 5-0. Ms. Lustig, congratulations, Mr. DiMartino. I'm sure you're going to be missed. Very excited to have you at Rogers.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate your appointment.
Next is extracurricular stipends. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be resolved that the extracurricular stipends dated November 2nd, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Born of All. May I have a say? Thank you, Mr. Connor. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, Ms. Kramer, anything to add about that?
So as we continue to fill our extracurriculars, the newest appointments for your approval tonight are in red on the agenda. The others have already been approved previously, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is 5-0, Ms. Lustig. Next is winter coaching stipends. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be resolved that the winter coaching stipends dated November 2nd, 2023, as recommended by the superintendent of schools, be approved as presented.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Vargas-Crummonde, seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Ms. Vargas-Crommet, seconded by Mr. Silverbody on that one. Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Kramer, anything?
Uh, just again, the newest, um, coaches for approval this evening are in red on the agenda.
Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is five at zero, Mrs. Lustig. That brings us to New Business. And the first item is a rather substantial list of textbook recommendations. Uh, and he's our first, first review, so no motion. Uh, Dr. Johnson.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Miga. Ms. Miga, what would you like to add about those?
I'm going to go through every single one.
You read them each.
There's no need because last month we are, yes, last month, we had a great presentation from Kim and Orlando regarding the K-4 relouts that are aligned to our Heritage and Identity Month. Um, and so as you know, these are years in the making, um, where we have, um, curated the text through our own staff, but also, um, solicited a lot of feedback from our community members. So we did that through our DEI Coalition, um, through multiple communications, um, home, but then also through a survey last year where we had a lot of great feedback from our community, um, and staff as well, um, around the text. So after, I think literally three years of work, we are so excited to present the books. And because there are so many, what we've done is we actually have goodie bags. So, um, we do have every single text here for your review, but we separated them by months. So, um, there is going to be five, they're very short, but five books, um, per month. And so if people have particular ones that they would like to review, um, then you can take that particular goodie bag and, um, review it.
Sounds good.
Review them, yeah.
We'll coordinate that after we adjourn, maybe? Does that make the most sense? We all have a little bit of homework. Thank you very much for all the work you and your office and everyone, um, you know, Kim and Orlando and everyone else have put into this because this is amazing. Very exciting. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Next is Policy Review, and this is also a first read, so I will turn it over to Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, Ms. Futterus. Ms. Kramer?
Thank you.
Can I toss force, please?
Yeah, so the first one for us to review tonight for approval at our next meeting is the budget card number 5130, the budget adoption. Um, this has been, um, revised really in terms of the contingency budget section was added, um, to make it apparent that the topic is addressed in the policy. Um, and then there's additional information related to contingency budgets, um, was added for clarity purposes. Um, and then the last two paragraphs were moved for just really organizational purposes and clarity. And I thank you to, um, Mr. Brennan for his work to also review this policy. The second policy is Administration of the Budget, 5140. Um, that one is revised to reflect the expiration of Education Law, um, 3614, which is the statement of the total funding allocation. Um, that Education Law 3614 requires that districts annually submit to the Commissioner of Education and the Director of the Budget a detailed statement of that total funding allocation. Um, and so again, and also the section titled Statement of that Total Funding Allocation has been suggested to delete, um, to align with that law. And I thank you to Mr. Brennan. And if you have anything extra you'd like to share or maybe.
Uh, well, the second one, during this last year's, uh, budget cycle, the state budget removed the requirement of the, uh, budget transparency requirement because they, and that was advocated for because it was redundant of a federal reporting mechanism that occurs on December 31st, which is for the asset funding, but basically it's breaking down how much you spend by bill.
And the next one is, um, school safety plans. And, um, all right. So for school, uh, safety plans, there were revisions really connected to, um, really there's a state disaster, clinical diseases, and really the, the piece added around, um, the need for remote instruction within those safety plans. So the, um, policy is marked up, um, in blue for those suggested changes. And again, thank you to Mr. Brennan and Mr. Schaller for their work in reviewing, um, this policy as well. So the next policy is the non-discrimination anti-harassment policy, 3170. Um, and this one has been really revised, um, to update, um, the sexual hara- the sexual harassment prevention policy for employers in New York State. So although it focuses on addressing sexual harassment in the workplace, it's also been updated, um, with that prevention policy to provide the methods for reporting and investigating discrimination and it, and how it applies to other protected classes as well. Uh, really this, since this policy provides a general approach for addressing complaints of discrimination and harassment, um, it really does have that revised language throughout it to re, again, reflect that method of reporting and investigation. Um, it's as well as it's described in the, um, sexual harassment prevention policy that we've had, and not only, um, do these revisions, um, assist us in making, leading those requirements, they also will help us create consistency with the policies, um, make our policies easier for us to, um, to adhere to and follow. And then the last policy, um, 3410 for code of conduct. This policy has been, um, completely rewritten, and you'll see that there's quite a length difference from our current policy. Um, and really this is one that our policy service, um, really reviewed, um, for length, and it's to, to add those pieces tied, tied to, um, dress code language, clarifying that as well as, um, the clarity of, uh, sharing of the code of conduct and making sure that people, people are aware of it. So again, this one has been completely, um, re, redone, so you won't see a marked-up version in board docs.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. Any questions or comments on those? Thank you for all the work into the policy committee. Uh, this is a first read, so we will anticipate, uh, voting on these on November 16th. Any questions that do come up in the meantime, please reach out to Dr. Johnson. Next is the Iroquois Vestibule. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Westerend Aquatic Central School District approves the finalized expenditures for the emergency project for the secure vestibule at Iroquois Middle School in the amount of $220,127.10.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Ms. Vargas-Crommet, seconded by Mrs. Bornavall and Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brennan, anything to add about that? And I will make my recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Um, so back in 2120 as member states, we did an emergency project to address vulnerabilities at our Aquatic Middle School so that we could, um, better screen visitors and improve access control. So it qualified as an emergency project because it related to safety and security. Unlike like a traditional capital project where you would do a long study before going into the project and determine estimated costs so that the voters can approve it. With an emergency project, it's really an estimate. And, um, so our estimate from our architects and construction managers was about $215,000. When the work was completed, it was all approved, but it, when it's all completed, it was, it ended up being about $5,000 more, $220,000. And New York State requires since the original estimate that the board approved was less than the final cost, the board needs to approve the final cost before they can, uh, go through and, uh, this date that is, uh, start giving us our stated on it. So it's the final piece of it. Um, again, it's just for transparency and, uh, ensure that the board being gains this control of the projects. Let me answer any questions.
Is there contingency planned? Like was there contingency for possible increase of over budget, like?
Within the, see, all the, this project itself, because it's an emergency project, it's an unplanned project. So it was, or it was drawing upon, um, contingency funds within the budget already.
I see.
Any other questions for Ms. Kramer? Thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor? That is five at zero, Mrs. Lustig. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. May I have the recommended resolution, please?
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Westerend Aquatic Central School District approves the consent agenda, which includes G2 through G7.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Connor, seconded by Ms. Bornavall. Uh, tonight on the consent agenda is the Recommendations of the Committee on Special Education, textbook recommendation, My Family, Your Family, textbook recommendation, Our Class as a Family, textbook recommendation, This is How We Do It, textbook recommendation, What Does It Mean to Be an American, and Surplus Equipment. Are there any items on the consent agenda on which a board member would like to have removed for separate discussion? Are there any items on the consent agenda which a board member would like removed to vote on separately? Is there any discussion on the consent agenda as a whole? I know there were some textbooks out. Anybody have any feedback on those?
Yes, this one was great, especially for the age group, what does it mean to be American? And definitely the meat is in the back, the adult section dives into all the meanings of being an American. Very nice.
Nice, okay. I know Mr. Bay had one of the other ones. All right, any other, uh, discussion on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? That is five zero, Mrs. Lustig. And that will bring us to future meetings, but we have future meetings.
Yes, we have a business meeting on November 16th at 7:00 PM here at District Office. Uh, we'll have the Meet the Candidates event on November 27th at 6:30 here at District Office, and a study session December 7th at 6:00 PM at Rogers.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And just a note, I had on my calendar that December 7th, Colebrook, so just make sure if anybody else went through the original ward calendar, you need to change that to Rogers. Or I typed it wrong. Could be either. Uh, next is Executive Session. Do we have a reason to go into Executive Sessions? No?
No, we do not.
Excellent. Well, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Connor, seconded by Ms. Vargas-Crommet. All those in favor? That is five zero. Thank you, everyone, for a very succinct meeting. Congratulations again to Mr. DiMartino. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.